This is my own personal opinion. I would prefer always to see these as far away from our private property or as property line as possible. We have some flexibility. I don't know if there's any care that this board, I don't know if there's the appetite for the board to take that on. I do have something that's related to it. There was a question and I don't know if this is more for staff based on when you get to the minimum lot sizes and setbacks on this and as it relates to our actual ordinance. I understand they're on a 25 acre parcel of property right now, but they currently lease leasing 100 feet by 100 feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
So maybe, I mean, maybe silence to it, but how does, in a couple of years, it becomes five acres yourself? Is, you know, how do we, basically they were leasing 100 by 100, but getting five acres? Is that my understanding? Because this could not go smaller than five acres at any point in time. And I'm not sure if, I mean, that's essentially what they purchased, was five acres land a kilo. Smaller than five acres. Am I correct in that, the ying of this?
That's the way it's structured, is that at a starting point, it needs to be 25 acres or more, but if, and the intent behind that, the benefit of following this closely with the council, which most of you, is that the council did want to allow for very large properties to still be maybe subdivided in the future and not prevent development on, say, a 25 acre parcel just because there's one tower, but still provide a pretty sizable parcel around that tower and possibly be subdivided. That should provide some reasonable walkway, et cetera. So that's where the 25 acres comes in, starting point for this, but then should the Parker family or the property owner decide your subdivision, the land area around the tower could shrink, but only shrink down to no less than five acres. So before this is approved, the planning board needs assurance that that is the understanding and that should, on development projects, if someone came to this property line, that the land around the tower remain five acres or greater and that those setbacks will...
Will we make that public decisions later?
Alright, great point.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Alright, so that, I mean, it looks like my colleagues have addressed this, I am supportive of a 150 foot foundation to support a 150 foot tower for the future. I agree with my colleague Susan that one tower with three carriers on it is better than three towers at 120 feet. And I think, I think that's it. Like I said, I would like to just put this out there. And at some point, all of us might actually be sitting out there instead of here talking about a cell tower, a money, our property. And I bring it up in the context of how close to your property line do you really want it to be? And 180 feet is actually less frontage than I have in my current house. I'm Zoned RF and I've got a 200 foot frontage on my building, so the tower would actually be closer to my property than the actual length of my property line. And that's, that's something I look at. When I walk down my driveway, in my mailbox, I look at the length of my property line and say, that tower could actually be closer than what I'm looking at right now to my property line. And I want us to consider that as board, and you guys feel free to shoot me right down right now, but I hate the thought of not, you know, if we're going to prove one thing, I mean, we're setting a precedent and I would rather just start right out of the gate that they get as far away from a property line as our ordinance allows. And that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Well said. Mike?
Thank you. I think you've done a good job meeting the ordinance. I appreciate that. How do you answer, I think you touched upon it a little bit when you first began discussing tonight, but how do you answer a citizen who says, "Mike, it would just fine now," without bringing out all the engineering that we had seen in previous weeks, talking a little bit about the demand in the system, et cetera, et cetera? Can you talk about, is this more about meeting future demand as more than it is current demand?
Yeah, I'll talk and then Chip can jump in if I run a bell. So there, this is to address current demand and a current deficiency in the coverage in this area. And as I think, folks now, we're trying to address a couple of different areas in town where we think that the demand is inadequate. So this is an evaluation of what we have today based on what are kind of the expected anticipated uses of folks with their phones, which includes both voice and data access through the cell phone to do what everybody's doing with their telephones these days. So when it was almost all voice, it was less of an impact on the system. The addition of data puts a significant tax on the system. And also there's fluctuations based on the number of users who may be using the site at any one point in time. And that change, that changes. So it may be that folks can get cell service, they may be able to get it in some corner of their house, but not the other, or some piece of their property, but not the other, or some portion of the road, but not the other. But the services is, has been deemed inadequate under current usage and for the kind of broadest average of the type of use that we're using our cell phones for, and also with an eye to making sure that you have continuous coverage. So unlike, if you were building an FM station, you know, it's, it's okay everywhere as you're driving around or you're walking around your house for the signal to go and come back as it comes back. But with a cell phone service, when you lose the signal, you drop the call, you lose the access to the internet, and you have to start all over again. So the standard is a little bit higher to make sure our phones work continuously throughout the service territory. But that doesn't mean that someone's not going to get a signal here and there, so that will happen.
Now you said, the purpose of this tower will meet current demand. Do you also look towards what 10, 15, 20 years of anticipated development, Mike?
Absolutely. And some of that is done with antenna upgrades that generate more power, so as the number of users, the population of the town grows, and it's the population that taxes the signal, you can alter the antennas to provide more power, which essentially doesn't change the footprint of the coverage, but when more people are trying to get that tower, it allows it to function as it would, you know, before you had that other...
So essentially, this kind of design, you can improve for future demand without any real...
That's correct. And a lot of what Chip does are antenna swap outs that are usually code enforcement officer only, so that's happening all throughout, so...
Thank you for that. I, the pictures of the camouflaged monopole, the pine tree, is that at 120 feet?
Yes, that's one. All the pictures of the poles and the monopole are at 120.
Although the balloon showed two...
That's correct. And you can see, in particular, the one from the subdivision, if the pine tree went to 150, it would look different than, and, you know, 90 to 120 is usually the best range for a monopole in which, for someone that were to come in to the neighborhood after the project was built, wouldn't be something that would jump out of that. At 150 to 190 feet, usually it just doesn't look natural and you end up using different techniques.
Well, I appreciate your offering that option. I think that our ordinance, although I think this is our first bill ever, if you will, or maybe second, if you count any PTs on the vision game, I would, I would think that camouflaged monopole in a presidential area would be where everyone would start, especially as opposed to something that might be considered for a regular monopole.
Yeah, I think given the height, that would be our recommendation as well, having reviewed simulations. As you can see from the simulations, it does a significantly better job of blending in to the existing vegetation with that design.
Is there, this is in a operating gravel area, a gravel yard? This site?
A portion of the site is.
Is there any blasting in the, in the gravel or is it just...
It's all, it's mostly sand.
So there's no blasting?
I don't, I don't think so. Certainly, we've had discussions with the property owner about, you know, Chip has had those about what's necessary for the tower to be there and sort it out, the kind of operational issues, so we're comfortable that this is the site.
And I think I asked a couple meetings ago about what the future expansion, the kind of work subdivision, what this might do to that. Was there any further illustration of that?
Yeah, Jay was helpful. He sent us a copy that shows the subdivision and the kind of the hammerhead that's potentially dedicated to the town. We think that, you know, given the 25 to 5 issue and the setbacks, that given that it's a 60 acre lot, that certainly the property owner is going to be able to structure future subdivision in a way that would work and, you know, locate a road in a way that would make sense for pass-through traffic. It could be kind of coterminous with our access that would require an upgrade. It may move to the southeastern corner of the site. Certainly, that's one of the things that we don't know, but given the size of the parcel, there's significant flexibility in dealing with future...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jay.
Thank you. John?
First off, I'd like to thank you for explaining the standards, and I want to say something to the public. This has been an ongoing process, we're probably only here that we've discussed this, and there's been all kinds of public hearings designing these standards, and we have a four-step process. And this particular site is the third step of the process. We have to go through each step first, and if it doesn't fit in that, then we have to go next. We can't approve this if it goes in the second step. So it's right here for everyone to see the standards. I mean, these things were approved last October. So it's very difficult for us, and it's a long process for everybody to go through these standards on what we have to do. So the fact that it's not been disclosed is incorrect. I agree with Nick on the 150 foot foundation design. I think that should be considered, probably nothing in the future, but 12 years from now, that could be a possibility, and we need to look at that now. As far as the monopines, so to speak, how large do the needles last?
They're good, they're tough. Ice storms, and we would expect, you know, a condition of approval would be that it isn't damaged or harmed, so that, you know, the...
You'll read my mind, is it?
Yes.
So it needs to be conditioned for years, not a record.
Yes.
Five years from now, it could be just a bunch of sticks sticking there, and it could be replaced.
And, and the foundation will be designed for 150 foot monopine, which means there is additional ice clothing associated with that potentially, and that's all factored into the design of the, of the facility.
I agree with Susan, they're not necessarily very pretty, but they're a little better than just a monopole.
That's all. Thank you. I just got a couple of things, because I've been hearing distances, and I'm looking at the map. It seems to me that the distance between the tower and Carter Brook Drive is more than 180 feet. What am I missing? It may be down to the other end, on a blond turn road may be closer.
Yeah, so the closest property line would be the 253 Broad Turn Road, Brenda Reed, and that's 255 feet from the center of the tower to that point on the property line. That, that would be the closest, and that's the minimum setback. That's either 150 and then you can go up to 300 percent of the tower height. The distance to the hammerhead at the end of Carter Brook Drive is probably 820 feet or so. That distance, I'm just kind of looking at you shift that 803 foot setback line over to the road, it's about 800 feet. So it's, right now, it's currently designed to be much farther from Carter Brook Drive. There is a field over there that's been cleared, or it's been cleared for a very long time. So although moving it in the direction of Carter Brook Drive would get it farther away from Brenda Reed's property, it moves it closer to the clearing, which might not be, even if, you know, you wanted to think about extending the setbacks, it might not be the best place to put it, and there's significant vegetation to the southwest towards the Reed's property that offers it, such that moving it a little bit farther away probably won't alter the visual impact that much. The one, if you look at the photo simulations, and if you go to B, just to follow up on your question, there is, you go to the third page, which says, Driven Verified Visibility Map, two mile radius. This overshot shows in green all of the roads where the balloons couldn't be seen at 120 feet. And Site 7 is the one that is kind of closest to the property, that's closest to the southwest of the site, so if you go through the sims to where you see photo location seven, and it says from Tibbetts Road, you see the before and after. The first one shows the red balloon, it's very hard to see the yellow balloon, but it's right above the tree access. Then when the tree goes in, this is one of the best uses of the monopole, because it will really blend in quite a bit. And so that was the one that was at the kind of 255 foot setback level to the, to that property line. Moving it another 40 or 50 feet away might provide a little bit, but you probably couldn't tell from this distance. It would move it closer to Carter Brook, so our thinking was kind of where we have put it was a nice blend of the two. But, you know, you're absolutely right. In every one of these cases, I think it's reasonable to say, look, put it at 300 percent, just let's start there, and then for you to consider whether it's actually okay to move it towards the 150 percent. And you might have a kind of a policy in reviewing these, where you start at 300 percent from the closest property line, and you have the applicant explain or show you why either it doesn't matter or might be better to move it closer to 150. We don't think it would matter if you move it 300 percent away from this property line, but certainly that's a reasonable way to look at your ordinance, to try to make sure you're protecting the closest property.
If you could, Phil.
Sorry, what was that?
If you could from Mrs. Reed or Ms. Reed?
I don't believe so. We've only seen the comments that have been submitted to the town that Dan has forwarded.
I know you've addressed this, but just for the public record, in one case scenario, it ceases and we have an abandonment clause. Are you aware of it and...
Yes, there's two steps. First one is, we would be ordered by the code officer to remove it if it's discontinued, I think it's for a year. And then you will have a surety in place that will equal the cost to remove the tower in the event Brian and Myler disappeared and wasn't able to do it, and you would have those resources to take the tower down yourself.
And the last, Woodard, kind of mentioned something about DEP. Is the DEP involved?
We have to figure out whether we need a permit by, I don't think we need a permit rule by rule for the crossing because there's an existing culvert, but Woodard and Karen had asked us to do a hydrological study to ensure that the culvert is working as it was intended. So we're going to circle back with our engineers to respond to that comment and confirm that the culvert is the right size and the right location and it's actually allowing what constitutes a very small human stream to move onto the road. I'll, I have an initial call on the DEP. I don't think we're going to require, we might need a nerve book permit by rule if we're doing anything that is not associated with the crossing, that's within 75 feet, but I'm going to check with the engineers and nail that down. And we're aware of your, I don't know if that applies to permit by rule, that's the 14 day notice, but your desire to add state federal rules in hand prior to the planning board's final determination, so to rule and nail that one down.
So I, I mean, anything else from the board, but you've dealt with, I think, could, I'm just kind of curious, have you, have you folks have leading to this at all time? Is it...
Yes, we're, we're actually willing to do either. I think we, it doesn't matter to us, the service will work perfectly both ways, it's really up to you folks to decide which one.
Because I'm looking at 15 Carter, Carter Brook Drive here.
On the pine?
I remember looking at the pine, I'm also looking at the tower.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think, the pine, the pine stands out to me, where I think after a while it might just become other power, but I may be mistaken there, that's not why I got that guy. But you folks seen, seen this?
Have we seen them? These pictures?
Yes, please. Okay. Wow, I don't know. See them? Are you...
I, I think this is very real concern, and I would like to have, I would like to just say to staff that somehow or another, before the final decision is made, we need to have something, you know, a tower without the monopines is going to look like, because I think we have a lot of idealistic ideas here on what that pine looks like. It doesn't look like mine. And taller it gets, the more it doesn't look like a pine. That's just my opinion, but I think we need something other than these photos, something a little closer that shows us what the difference is. You really do, you get used to poles, otherwise you go out and you go to a cocktail party, invite your friends in to have a pint. It really doesn't look like a pine.
Well, and what we've tried to do, and you'll see, I mean, the first one that I saw was off of Route 2 near, in Massachusetts, which was a bottle brush covering the top 15 feet. And then there was a gray pole that was 20 feet before the tree level. It was just absolutely horrific. You know, we've done, we, we did a simulation for a monopole that was going to go into the base of Mount Valium, Duke Dunham and Bar Harbor.
Excuse me, I don't want us to discuss that anymore, too, with this. Can we just ask that you bring us examples of those?
Okay.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, because we're not at that point tonight, but could we please just have examples?
Some additional details on...
Details that we can actually look at and say yes and no.
If, if I may, if I may, just to address that. Happy to bring you sample photos. The kicker is this, the kicker is vantage point. I could bring you a photograph from Carterville Road in Canterbury, New Hampshire, looking at a 100 deep of monopine, and it looks unbelievable. It's 180 feet tall. What's the difference? The difference is the vantage point. Okay, I could bring you photographs of the site down in Nassau, down in Jersey, off the Garden State Parkway, that make monopines look terrible.
But make us one that comes from...
That's why, that's why we, that's why we prepared these photo sims for you.
But make us one that comes from here, the photo sim that I can actually go up close to, you know?
Yeah, so what, what, so what, I just want to make sure that you're responding.
Closer to it.
I'm sorry, I don't mean, I know I'm out of order, but you don't have to look at it. He has to look at it, I have to look at it, my neighbor has to look at it. Why don't you let us decide, rather than you sit here and decide whether philosophically you like a pine tree or you like a pole? Right?
Man, okay. Unfortunately, you don't get to make that decision, I do. And the bottom line is, we will ask you what you would like, and all I'm asking them to do is to provide us with something that you can look at up close and personal, so that you know exactly what you want.
If it provides, if it provides the applicant to look at it...
This is big broadcast, and they can't hear you, hopefully.
Alright.
So, yeah, well, I want to make sure we can get you, we can get you some specs, what we asked them then to do was to render as the monopole what we would propose to build, but if there's additional information that you need to evaluate that, I don't know if that's something that we can work with Dan on, but like, Susan, I want to make sure that he gets you the information that you're looking for.
I see we all need assistance.
Yeah, we can work with the applicant on getting more detailed information on contemporary monopole that they think would be the most camouflaging and more up-to-date version, maybe what's been, you've seen in other areas.
This is our best track at it, but certainly feedback from the board or through the people who are closest through the board, you know, that we're trying to do a tapered style that isn't the bottle brush, so that's the one design change that has been newer with these projects, but if there is...
Let me jump in.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because this is the way I'm been handed. Is, I think the message has been sent, I think if you work with the planning staff, okay? And if anybody in the public has any suggestions, send them to the planning staff. So that way we have the conduit as to what may be preferred by the residents and what you think is best, and planning staff can coordinate all of that. Okay? Anything else?
Yes. Would be possible in the next iteration of this map, to see what five acres looks like around your tower, just that dotted line that's colored to say...
Was the tower at the center?
Yeah. Well, not necessarily at the center, I think this is my point, because if I heard correctly earlier, you would be forced to maintain two of your distance lines if you ever come down to five acres. That would be right. So if you maintain 343 on one side and 255 on the other, I'm wondering what that parcel ends up looking like from there. I did a quick calculation, that's almost four acres of land right there.
In that hard corner?
Not hard. Exactly. So what I'm saying is, is you're actually, if you got to five acres, that tower on the other side, that we don't have a delineated lineage on, could be 20, 20 feet away from the property line. Now, I know that can't happen, but I want to see how far that, because you're going to have to maintain one, you have to be 180 at least, right? It is 150 percent.
I mean, I guess what I'm seeing, I'm seeing kind of a floating box moving over it and where are the different options where it could go, like...
You wouldn't have a choice, though. What I'm saying is, your two lines where you're maintaining them now, accordingly, would have to stay the same.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we were going to move, what would happen is you would create a new boundary line that would have to be 180 feet. All of, all four corners of this square would have to be at least 180 feet away in all directions. So you couldn't move it too far into a corner, 180 and 180. But the block could move that into any of the four corners, that 180 by 180, depending on how, finding something that would look. And maybe the whole corner would sit there, but the boundary would have to be 180 feet away.
Correct.
I guess the question is, and Dan probably hadn't even thought about it, if it's possible to reduce it to 100 percent, I don't know if it's possible to go down to 100 percent in the subdivision, but that could be an issue as well, but I'm not sure how...
There's flexibility to go to 100 percent. But I'm curious to see what that line looks like, just, you know, again, I want, but I want to see what five acres looks like. I want to know what this looks like 30 years from now.
Should we work with Dan on that?
I know, it's a toddler, but look, if I'm going to be careful, what am I doing here?
What if, what if it comes out in a way that you don't like? What would you then ask us to do?
I'm not at, this is nothing technical, what I'm asking, this is a visual thing, just to make Nick McGee of the planning board very happy, so I can see what a five acre parcel looks like on...
Yeah, most of the, most of the designated areas is corner here, so, yeah.
Because this is what happens, is you're going to have to be, you know, 120 feet away, we'll say, you know, even if you were granted the worst case, I want to see what that new piece of property looks like and where that tower's located.
So, so if we have the box, I just want to make sure we put it, just a colored box, all right? All right, we'll do kind of a representative box.
All you want to do is see it.
I just want to see it. That's all, that's all. Okay? We'll make a big thing, just want to see it.
Anything else? Do you need anything else from us right now?
I don't think so. I think we're good to follow with Dan and Jay and get the proper revisions on the plan, do it from the DEP and the response of the, but I think it's just a few of order terms of things and get it back to you for the...
I think we're moving closer to the final, that's, you know, based on the other criteria that we're moving very close to.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Now, having said that, and having gone through that process, we need to go through it again, I think in a five minute break. Ten minutes. Welcome down to the IRS meeting. What's going on? Scott Ward. Consider item number six. Navigator Properties, please request a site review for transmission tower at 79 Holmes Road, Scarborough Vision Game Site, assesses map R33, lot number one. If you want a little piece of this, put this call.
Happy to. I'd like to hear the last application, this is the first two, four applications regarding the interesting towers and the new ordinance, and also like we discussed the last one, it really is a two or three step process. The first step being walking through the priority of what you're expecting to do with the ordinance, and I know that the board and applicant talked about that in the first meeting, and continuing that process this evening just to solidify or not this location and transmission tower over, the way the ordinance... to solidify, um, or not, this location and transmission tower, the way the ordinance is laid out, is we first consider existing towers to see if, um, the, the carriers in question can be accommodated and for coverage improvements on existing tower, then you look to the industrial districts, and that was part of the discussion, certainly on this one, is there's a light industrial district, um, fairly close in proximity to, to this property, which is in the overlay, um, so the board with guidance from Wood and Kern and the applicant can discuss, you know, what are the coverage improvements, uh, through the D R F analysis, et cetera, that, that make the, the location of the fishing game site in the overlay superior enough to choose that location over the light industrial zone nearby, um, and then consider, you know, telecommunications facilities, those are the antennas attached to buildings, et cetera, that can serve more specific areas, not as broad an area, um, before deciding on this location. So I'd encourage the board to kind of talk through that and, and, um, kind of come to consensus on, on that particular step, with guidance again from the applicant and Wood and Kern's review and staff. And then if you decide that this is the, the proper, um, location in the overlay, then you can review, much like the last application, kind of the details of, of the tower proposal in terms of, um, the view, um, with the blue test deciding between a one thirty and one fifty or something in between, um, to allow for this provider or carrier as well as future ones for co-location, talk about, um, tower aesthetics, monopole or monoline or others make sense, et cetera. So, um, this one's, I think, sort of just kind of solidify your priority location, then you can turn your attention to those, um, site-specific details, and in terms of staff comments, other than that, I think this one's, I would say, um, similar in that, you know, there's a carrier of two, it sounds like there's two now, um, that are comfortable at, at certain heights, but we do want to plan for a future co-location if possible as sort of visit, visit, um, in terms of visually acceptable, I should say, and so thinking about either, you know, installing a hundred and fifty, a base that can accommodate a hundred and fifty-foot tower, or installing a taller tower at the outset, you know, whatever the board's preference is in terms of fitting into the landscape, we're giving guidance on that would be wise at this point. So with that in mind, I'll turn it over to this particular.
Thank you. Uh, before I turn it over to the applicant, uh, Ms. Argus has, has left, so Mr. Beale will now be a voting member. And now, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Surprised with the second tower hearing, you lost one person.
I hope.
Glad to see most of you come back.
You, I hope you, you got, learned a lesson from this course if it happened.
We, we, we're paying very careful attention. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, again, my name is John Springer, I'm a Springer mom, of course, in New Hampshire. Uh, not a main attorney, but I do a lot of tower work, this is why Mariner Tower has asked me to give a recital, uh, I'm joined by Louis Vitale of Mariner Tower. Uh, I do want to, I know it's late, you've already dealt with one tower site, I want to try to focus like a laser beam on the issues that I think, uh, Mr. Bacon raised in the staff report base. We do want to talk about the, uh, priority of location issue for tiers, uh, if I could take one step back, last hearing, uh, when we were in front of you, I believe at the end of May, uh, we had submitted the Burnham Road plot, the R F plot, uh, we have it up here on board again, um, there was a question about, uh, in the first round of staff reports, whether the Burnham Road site worked for us because there was an existing tower there, and as you know, one of the things we have to show is that we cannot exist in towers, A T T cannot exist in towers. The Burnham Road plot shows where the Burnham Road site is, the orange dot right there, and it shows the coverage from that site, um, the fishing game site is down here, um, and this is in rough approximation gap we're trying to cover, so you can see from the Burnham Road site, because of the distance from the target area, it really doesn't bring coverage into the coverage gap. And so, uh, and I think when the firm agrees with that, I think staff agrees with that, Burnham Road is really not, uh, a viable alternative. I would note, this R F plot is run at a hundred and nineteen feet, which is the, to our understanding, the first or the highest developed slot on that power. So, uh, we think that shows pretty conclusively that Burnham Road is not a viable candidate. We submitted to the board a packet of supplemental information, uh, and I understand, uh, Mr. Bacon and, and Wood and Kern reviewed that and issued a memo, dated, I believe, August third, um, addressing the priority of locations issue, um, the staff report said that during the board's deliberation, members expressed general, general level of comfort that, uh, there were no existing transmission towers, uh, that we could use that ties in Burnham Road plot I just said, that's the first tier, uh, the staff report also said that we could not meet that burden or, or use the tier that is the new telecommunications facility, uh, that's actually the third tier, so what I'd like to do right now, assuming everybody agrees with that, I'd like to focus in on the, um, the issue, the second tier, which is the industrial or light industrial zone tier, um, and we submitted, um, our supplemental packet, I'm assuming everybody has that, uh, if not, we have extra copies of this, uh, it's at tab two B, uh, it's entitled Fishing Game L I Zone Narrative, and it has a copy of this plot, which I just put up on the poster board as well. I would note, um, there are, um, a couple of plots we wish to talk about on this issue, and, uh, as Mr. Bacon said, it's our position, and I, I think it's a fair statement to say that Wood and Kern and staff don't, um, don't dispute this, but, uh, the fishing game site is a superior site from an R F perspective, radio frequency perspective, for a number of reasons. Um, first and foremost, uh, the fishing game site, it's not shown on this plot, but is really very centrally located within the gap. If you remember from our initial, uh, application on the R F plots, the, um, the red dot or the green dot for the fishing game site is really right in the middle of the gap, and I'm just picking one at, at random, so to speak, but this is an R F plot we showed, and the blue coverage is from the fishing game site, and that's really the coverage gap we're trying to address, and the fishing game site is the, again, the red dot right in the middle, um, you really can't get more centrally located than that, and that's important to understand, because, uh, some of the issues I'm about to talk about flow from the location, if you will, of the fishing game site being so centrally located, the closest portion, if you will, of the L I zone is about three tenths of a mile south, but when you move that distance down, it shifts the R F coverage as well, and it has some negative, shifting it down has some negative impacts. I put on the board here what we have as plot one, and we've highlighted in yellow what's called the focus zone in that supplemental material, it's, it's really mine and the one, Gorham Road, there's Gorham Road right there, and the fishing game site is approximately down here, the L I zone is down here further, and, um, one of the advantages to the fishing game site as opposed to the L I zone is because it covers more population, um, this is important because every federally licensed carrier, as a condition of their license, has to try to cover as much population as possible, in layman's terms, and if you look at the materials we sent in just in this zone here, um, the fishing game has a higher population count, it has a higher population percentage, um, than the L I zone, uh, which is further to the south. Um, the other, uh, another reason why the fishing game site is superior from an R F perspective is the overlapping coverage issue, and actually, before I leave this plot, um, as you, as it says in the report, um, the green areas here are the areas that are only afforded coverage from the fishing game site, and the blue areas are the areas that are only afforded coverage from the L I zone site, and the red is basically the overlap. And there's a couple of things to keep in mind, first of all, um, the L I zone that we're talking about, we're really in the very corner of it, we're at the closest, almost the closest part of that L I zone to the fishing game site, so it's almost from our perspective, when we're addressing the priority of locations, a worst-case scenario, if you will, it's kind of a strong term, but you get the idea, if we went further away from the fishing game site, deeper into the L I zone, these differences that I'm talking about would become more pronounced, in other words, uh, there would be less population covered up, coverage up here, more of a gap, which I'm going to talk about along Gorham Road, uh, and more of an overlap, which I'm about to talk about. So when we're talking about the comparison between the fishing game site and the L I zone, we're using a part of the L I zone that's really the most difficult for us to address, if you will, if we moved a mile deeper into the L I zone, uh, it would stand in more contrast, if you will. Um, the second table in the supplement, um, is the overlapping coverage, uh, from the fishing game site, and I have to apologize because I, I think it got swapped out in time, but we had submitted the initial supplement with the wrong caption on it, but, um, the first in the supplement on page two at tab B, the first plot here should be entitled Fishing Game Overlap Coverage, not L I Zone Overlap Coverage, that's a mistake on our part, and I apologize for that. I think that was correct, correct. But if you look at the, um, that table, the overlapping coverage between the fishing game site here and other surrounding sites that A T T is on is shown in blue, and we calculated that to be just over nine point eight square miles. The overlapping coverage from the L I zone, which is now down here, um, is about twice that, it's, it's just over seventeen miles, not almost twice that. The reason that's not a good thing is because you're trying to minimize the overlapping coverage, because you get what's called pilot pollution, you get essentially confusion between the two towers as to which tower should handle call, so the R F engineers try to avoid or try to minimize tower overlap or coverage overlap as much as possible. And here, we have it almost twice as much from the fishing games, or, excuse me, fishing, uh, from the L I zone as we do from the fishing game. And again, a lot of that flows from the fact that fishing game zone, or fishing game site is more centrally located within the gap. Um, and we have, Chip Perdett is still here, Horizon has indicated that, uh, they are interested in this site, um, they are looking at the fishing game site quite actively, and they have indicated that they think, uh, fishing game site works better for them as well from an R F perspective, and that if you move further site south, um, that site does not work as well for them either. Uh, so for all those reasons, we feel that the fishing game site is much better from an R F perspective than the L I zone, um, and we think for that reason we do meet the priority of location issue, um, in our favor. I would note that we're not going to address it right now until we move past this, uh, but from a visual standpoint, which is like, to my understanding, a big reason why the priority of location is instituted, uh, we think the fishing game site works a lot better than the L I zone. Um, so I would be happy to address any questions that would depend on the priority of location issue. I'm trying to, as I said, focus my comments and narrow my comments as much as possible, because I know you've got two more things behind us, and this is, I think, a rather narrow issue to look. You have to address any comments, Mr. Chair, or, or I can address the general standards?
Nick, you want a public comment? Oh, uh, thank you, thank you. Before I turn it over to the board, I just would remind you, this is also open to public comment, so if there's anybody from the public who would like to address this first issue, by the means, again, uh, what, it's your name, your address, try to keep your comments limited to five minutes, and any subsequent speaker, not be put to previous speaker, as said. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address? Boy. There is none, opposed to public comment, and now, you, you had a question last night, so I'm going to start with you, as far as the priority of location goes.
I think that's fair, Mr. Chair. So, I, I hear what you're saying, um, but I also, I'm looking at the pictures, and it, it is hard for me to think that, um, the new site, this is a tough one, I mean, I hear what you're saying, however, there's still the light industrial zone very close by, that solves most of your problem, except what you're, what you're, I, what I feel right now is I'm hearing this is ideal for us, um, and I get that, but I think the L I zone is workable, and I think that's, that's kind of a stumbling block, and I know you're trying to overcome it. And also part of me, and this is just a general comment to the board to hear, is before anyone makes up their mind of whether or not this passes the muster, is we're, it's much easier to get something through in the L I zone on, on this topic, so do I believe that these guys are going to take the harder route because they think it's more fun to deal with me, or are they really saying, telling us, we'd rather, we'd rather be here because it is more beneficial? It is a little bit more comforting to hear as well that there can be a co-location potential on this, because that means one less tower, one less time I have to look at these plotted maps and annoy people, so. I know the facts, um, I'm going to listen to my colleagues, um, I'll wait to hear some more comment, but, um, right now, I'm, I'm on the fence, and I'll see, I'll see what everyone else has to say, but thank you, I appreciate your attention.
Glad.
I think, actually, I tend to agree with your presentation, um, the explanation for the coverage and everything, I think we're fortunate that we have a piece of land like the fishing game where we would not, you know, we don't have residents that we have to deal with, as far as I know, um, and, um, it seems like it's going to provide the optimum amount of coverage that you folks are looking for, and, uh...
So I, I, I really don't have a, a big issue. I think I'm all set right now. Thank you. Hi, sure. Um, I too think that the fishing game location is superior to the L I zone. Now, even though the zone, uh, the ordinance rather, uh, wants us to look very carefully at avoiding the, uh, the zone that the fishing game is in, um, I would hate to just overly concentrate on the L I zone just because it's the L I zone, um, and it does come down to, in many cases, it does come down to aesthetics, and, uh, and we'll be talking more about that later, but we can't avoid the fact that, I don't think anyone would care where these cell towers were and how high they were and how many there were if there was no aesthetic issues.
You can't see it, exactly.
So, um, the fact that, um, the fishing game site is more aesthetically pleasing leads me to believe that, and it fits your coverage purposes, um, quite well, and it leads me to believe that there's more potential for us to potentially talk about height, talk about co-location, and... and thus reduce potential impacts from future interest in the project. So I'm satisfied with the presentation. I like the Fish and Games site. Thank you.
I would agree with Nick to a point, but the purpose of the standard is basically to have the right location, visual effects. To me, it really should be a light industrial, there's been enough evidence, coverage-wise. I'd get into details, but I won't. You have a member's field, the Fish and Games is fine as far as visual effects, so I'll just be glad. Go on.
Yeah, for some reason, I think I'm just slightly biased here. I also like the Fish and Games location better than the LI zone. Part of what was presented by the board, part about the technical aspects, which I don't understand to any great degree, but I do understand the overlap and the double overlap versus that location. So for that reason, I think that the Fish and Games would be a better location. It has lesser impact, like, about its stand. I think there's a better chance for co-location with another company. Glad to hear it, you guys talked to one another, so that there is that potential there. So I would do with this. The three members that favor the Fish and Games and two who would rather see it than the LI.
I was all over the Fish and Games. I'm sorry, initially looking at it, I prefer that, the pirate standards, the visual effects, the spirit within the Fish and Games is probably a better location as far as that goes.
Thank you, Tom. So I think, you know, the consensus of the point is that we're okay with the Fish and Games, a little bit more on now to the other, wouldn't it, standards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that, of course. I'd like to spend a little time on the visual aspects. But first, Mr. Chair, if I may, just give a general overview of the site. And we submitted site plans, one of the issues, there were several issues that both staff and Woodard and Kern came up with in terms of the width of the access season, which we now confirm is 20 feet wide, the size of the equipment shelter, which we've now found, et cetera. But I think it's fair to say that overall, I think they like the site plans as they were presented. I put up on the board sheet C101, which I think is a good overview of the property and where the, where the access utilities are going to be. This is the Fish and Games club. Home road is down here. There's going to be access from the existing drive coming in. There's a clubhouse you go past. We have a 75 foot by 75 foot lease compound sorted to the rear of the buildings, if you will, which is shown there. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about how this technology works, et cetera, because you got some of that from Verizon already. I think you understand that, I'd be happy to talk about that in particular, if you wish. The circle here on sheet 101 is the 150 foot setback, what I always call the fall zone. We have to be away from the property line, which we are, as shown by that. The only utilities that we're going to need, this is an unmanned facility, the compound is an unmanned facility, so we don't need water or sewer. We only need telephone and electric. The, those can be run from the existing services from home road. We're going to be doing the utilities underground. We're 280 feet to the closest property line to the east, over here. We are 500 feet from the rear lot line, about 1,000 feet to the south, and 1,500 feet from the west. If you go to sheet C102, you get a better, more close, closer view, if you will, of the compound. The, there's a parking and turnaround area here. And that circle right there is proposed on a pole. One of the reasons we situated it where we did is because this will allow us, not only to meet all the setbacks we have to meet, but also a minimum clearing will be necessary because we have a very limited access drive, if you will, in utilities. The wetlands are delineated and we meet all the wetland setbacks as well, the wetland The only traffic to this type of facility is after construction, one or two trips per month per carrier, usually in an SUV or passenger vehicle. And the tower is not going to be lit. There will be safety lighting on the equipment shelter or the equipment cabinets, if you will, but the tower itself not to let. The, there's no noise, no smoke, no fumes, except for the visual impact, it's a pretty, pretty passive use. Sheet 103 is a good side view of the monopole, the top. We showed 130, we'd like to talk to you about 150, which I'll do in a minute. The, if we had used a 130 pole, AT&amp;T would have sent a line, its antennas at 126. Each carrier needs 10 feet of separation below that. So at 130 feet, you're looking at 126, Verizon would be at 116, and then below that, 10 feet of separation if you're, there's two more slots. At 130, we proposed a four-carrier pole. The, the compound area, we're showing one equipment shelter here, which would be AT&amp;T. The way this works, you may know with the handset, where your personal device communicates with the antennas, and antennas communicate back to you. The signal goes up to the antennas, into the antennas, down cables, into the cave, and to the equipment cabinet or equipment shelter, where it ties into the landmine, and then your call is just routed out to wherever you're talking. And if we site it properly, and like this site is, right in the middle of the gap, and you have no significant gaps in coverage as you travel down the road, if you're in your car as a passenger, not as a driver, the answer just said hands-free, which I think is a good idea. You get, your phone or your device gets handed off from tower to tower, as you move from one RF footprint to the other. The compound's going to have an eight-foot chain link fence. And AT&amp;T uses an equipment shelter, which is 11 and a half by 16. Some carriers use cabinets on pads. But for now, we're just showing the equipment shelter for AT&amp;T. The compound uses gravel or crushed stone for the base. There is no pedestrian travel. And as I said, it's a very passive use, apart from the visual impact. Good thing about this site, in our opinion, is it does have limited visual impact. I've done a lot of these hearings. In my opinion, the first rule of zoning towers is the visual impact is directly proportional to the number of people who come out to complain about. We have no one. I don't know if anybody's ever planned to come out about this site, but it's been publicly noticed and you don't have anybody coming out saying, I don't want to look at that thing. It's a pretty good site, right off the bat. That doesn't mean you can't put us to our proof, that doesn't mean you shouldn't look at this very carefully, but I don't think I'm telling any of you don't know. But the balloon tests that we submitted, we submitted two at this point, with the initial application, it was 130 feet. With supplemental application, it was at 150. We're happy to do 150 feet. And actually, after seeing 150-foot balloon test, we think that makes a lot of sense here. We can do 130 with an extendable pole. Quite honestly, we prefer not to do that. We prefer 150, but if the board limits us to 130, we can do as an extendable. But it is a process to extend it. Once you build it, you build it so the foundation supports 150. And as I think you heard in the prior application, you know, you essentially build it like you do a 150 pole, but you do it with 130. The problem is, then extending it, you have carriers on there who have to redo their cabling, you've got to redo the leases because you're going for a different slot on a different tower. It's sort of a pain in the neck. We think 150 does work here because of the location and the lack of visual impact, but we will do it either way. This part of the 130-foot balloon test is a predictive analysis, which basically says, this is where we think you're going to see this tower. It's based on topography. And I think this shows the, with no tree cover or vegetation considered, so this is really a worst-case scenario, if you will. The red shows where, based on topography, that they believe the tower will be visible at 130 feet, the tower being the sort of purple triangle in the middle. And as you can see, it's really pretty limited. This is a, if you can see this blue, a blue circle here, I believe that's a one-mile radius circle, yes. There's a one-mile radius circle here, there's a half-mile radius circle there, and there's the tower. And if you look at the 150-foot predictive analysis, same assumptions, topography, it assumes topography only, it takes into account topography only, it doesn't take into account tree cover. So this is really, again, a worst-case scenario. And you can see, when I put the 150 on top, it's really not much more than what you can see from the 1/3. And again, there's the one-mile radius right there. So most of the predictive visibility is further away, which is, again, now that I can really talk about the visual impact, now that we're through the priority of locations issue, this is a great site. This is a, this is a great site. It's tucked away on a large, I didn't say this, but it's over 200 acre site. It's heavily wooded, it's private property, and it's well-located. So this is what we consider very limited visual impact. And as you can see, from the bottom 130 to the top 150, there's really not much difference. Probably a little, but not much. The, Mr. Chair, I can walk through the pictures from the visual study, if you wish. If the board has had an opportunity to examine them in detail, I don't want to take your time, but if you haven't done that, I think it is instructive because obviously, one of the issues you have to deal with is whether, you know, it's 130 or 150. I'd be happy to go through those pictures. I can do it fairly quickly, if the board hasn't done it yet.
What's the decision, the board?
I look at it, I'm okay.
No, we're okay.
Okay.
Just ask a question.
Sure.
When you go to 150, does that have any effect on your overlap? I know you were talking about the overlap before on 1/3.
It probably will to a certain degree because as you go up in height, your RF coverage would expand. So probably would a little. The sort of counterbalancing factors from the town's point of view is obvi, maybe I shouldn't say obvious, but you're creating better and more co-location slots beneath. I have to be honest with you, at, if you're at 130, the slots would go 126, 116, 106, 96. When you're at 96, that's a pretty low height from an RF perspective. Based on this tree cover, I don't think, I don't know what you're going to get below 96, certainly, and at 96, I think I could foresee carriers coming and saying 96 doesn't really work for us. If you're starting at 150 and you're going 146, 136, 126, now your fourth carrier's at 116, that's still, you know, probably 30 to 40 feet above the tree cover. That's still a good slot. I don't think there's any question for this side. That's really where the benefit is. And you could go down to 106 and even 96, you know, if you need six carriers, you know, five or six carriers in that pole. I personally think anytime you get it below 100 feet, just as a general statement, depends on the site, depends on the topography, et cetera, anytime you get it below 100 feet, you're pretty low. But that's sort of a long answer to a short question. I think, yes, to a certain degree, there is a little more. I don't think it's going to double. It's not going to be that dramatic like the LI zone does double at 1/3. Does that answer your question? So, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to address the general standards after the height and the visibility, if you wish, or I'll be happy to answer questions. Can I just keep going through the criteria to show you how we meet them? I'll be... You go a pretty, pretty brief. I'll try to be brief. Under the tower ordinance, the general standards after the priority of locations is the height. It can be 130 feet, you can go up to 150 feet if, if the, if the board finds that there is no visual impact as a result of that. I think that's, I'm sort of looking for the language, sorry, I should have highlighted it, but it says, "The planning board may allow the standard height limit to be exceeded by up to an additional 20 feet to a maximum of 150 feet if the increase in height enables co-location of additional antennas that otherwise cannot be accommodated on the tower and results in no material increase, no material increase in the visual impacts of the tower." And I think there's a good case to be made that we meet that criteria to go up to 150 feet. Second standard in the tower ordinance is the minimum lot size and setback. The minimum lot size is 25 acres, our host property is 206, I believe. There's a, we meet it at 130 and we also meet it at 150. We do not have to change the location of the tower, we don't have to change the plans. We meet the 150-foot tower setback, 150% of tower height setback, we meet at 150. The next criteria is buffering. All transmission towers shall be surrounded by a buffer of dense tree growth and vegetation. We feel that's the case here. That's why we situated it where we did. We feel we meet that criteria. The next criteria is visual impact analysis. I'm not going to go over that, given our discussion just now, other than to say, for the record, we've submitted visual studies at both 130 feet, 150 feet, and we feel that they've come out very well and shown that there is no visual impact, or very minimal visual impact from the site. Tower style is the next criteria. It says, "The tower type shall be limited to monopole style towers and sky tone and earth above this surrounding..." above the surrounding trees in earth tone, below tree top." We are proposing a single freestanding monopole tower here. The equipment shelter will have a light, stone-like finish. We propose that the tower and the antennas be a brushed gray finish. We're happy to talk to you about different colors, but in our opinion, brushed gray is best against this guy. I do want to talk two seconds about a monopine because you talked about that a lot in the first applicant tonight. In our opinion here, a monopine doesn't work as well for several reasons, certainly if you go up to 150 feet. But I think the monopine is more attractive an option, if you will, in that first situation where you are directly abutting in residential neighborhood. And where you, quite frankly, have people coming out saying, "You want a monopine." I, yeah, we want a monopine. I understand the board's decision, not the audience's decision, but in our case, given the limited visual impact here, we think that the monopole works much better. I would agree with, and I forget her name in the board, but her discussion about Susan August. You know, at 130 feet, I don't think you're going to fool anybody. At 150 feet, you're not. And my personal opinion is that an adsman pole can draw some attention. And Mr. Tally pointed out as well, we were talking about it during the first application. It's very difficult to do an extendable tower with the monopole because the shape of monopines is sculpted, if you will, or created based on the 130 height. And then you go up another 20 feet, you've got to start it all over again. So we believe that the monopine is not as attractive an option here and should not be used. The next criteria is the lighting. We are not proposing any lights on the tower. We have FAA, we've done an FAA review. We do not have to light the tower at 130 feet. Very confident that we don't need to do it at 150 feet. We've already done it, thank you, at 150 feet, and we'll not have to light the tower. The only lighting, as I said before, would be on the equipment cabinets where the equipment shelter is for the personnel, maybe 75 watt or something like that. The next criteria is co-location. We talked about this before. At 130, we've designed this to hold four total carriers, including AT&amp;T. I would think at 150, we could do five or six and create those additional co-location spots. The next criteria is advertising. We're not going to have any advertising on here. The only signage will be small warning signs and identification signs on the compound. The next criteria is the coverage, RF coverage analysis. We submitted a number of plots, RF plots, along with our first report, first RF report. The, those of that tab B of the initial application. I'd be happy to go through those in detail. We saw some of it already through those other boards. Rarely do you get a site so perfectly located in the field of a significant gap, which the plots show that this site at efficient game location really perfectly covers the significant gap. The structural standards is the next criteria. We have to meet the EIA structural standards, which we will do. The next criteria is existing towers. And as I said earlier, the RF report showed that there are existing towers that we can use. And in fact, most of the surrounding towers, except for the current roadside, AT&amp;T's already on them and are already using those existing towers. The last criteria that applies to us is abandonment. We will produce a, what's called a removal bond. We talked about this with Verizon during the first application. We will post a bond that says that if this site becomes abandoned and the renter does not remove it as required to do, the bond will be there so that the town essentially call upon you to move the tower itself. The, I think those are all the tower standards that are applied. I'll be happy to continue through the site plan review standards, Mr. Chair. Or answer any questions. I'm on a roll. I know people are in the edge of their seats. Involved by this presentation.
I think before you get to that, I'm going to do things a little differently.
Yep.
Because I've been taking notes. I'm going to call the board on each of those questions, OK? Rather than each of you having individual. Let's go with the height number one, 150 feet versus 130 feet. Any comments on that?
I'm in favor of 150.
That's a question.
Sure.
Currently, AT&amp;T is the only, the only one that must be situated on this pole, and they want it at 126. Is that correct?
Yes, they.
That's their ideal, that's their sweet spot?
Well, I guess I would say yes, to a certain degree. I don't think they'd object to going higher for daylight on 126, but.
Dave? My opinion is we, I'm in favor of 130.
I also would go with 150 because of the co-location and not having to have a year, two years, three years from now, somebody having to come back and go through the whole process all over again, especially in this location. My opinion is that it does warrant a 150 now and so we can avoid that and we can get as many other players under the kind of circumstances. So I think that's four to one, 150. The buffering, what's up here now is the topography is concerned. We're talking, you're talking about the monopine, but what's up here now?
For topography?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the ground, above ground level?
Yeah.
It was, we had a discussion with the staff about this because the fishing game site is, there's a difference of seven feet of elevation between the fishing game and LI. And I'll be darned if I can remember the numbers. I think we may have that.
Anybody have any comments on?
Yeah, you think that's surrounded by trees.
Well, I know that, but I mean, where do you put that tree?
I have no idea.
I do it a lot.
Well, it's the pine trees, Dave.
I mean, does anybody have any?
So we can guess majority of the time.
Does anybody have any? OK. We've gone, we go beyond 25 acre requirement and 150% even at whatever, yeah, setback. Anybody have any questions on the tower style and color?
I think a monopole is the best for this location. But yeah, it stated that 150 feet in particular, it balances, for me, I balance the height, the visual impact, which is minimal, but gain in co-location opportunities that make people comfortable with them. That's close to the kind of monopine.
Any other thoughts? Pretty much agree with that. Lighting, not needed, but you just threw something out about some water. There is a, there's a, a climate, get back the lights to the FAA.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we expect to cut off fixtures for any lighting that might be for the, for the maintenance building, the site, which expect them to comply with, making out that water is just the fixtures that shine around, not.